So, so I'm sorry. Sorry, Mrs.
Everybody.
You're doing the pledge. I will. Don't worry about it. You ready?
Yep.
I'd like to bring the Northampton County Council meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Heckman.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Dumbo, could you call the roll?
Second.
One second.
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mr. Dees.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro. Peg.
She's on mute.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. Mr. Rinsky. All present.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 6, 2018.
Motion to approve by proclamation, Mr. President.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Uh, next thing on the agenda is a confirmation of appointments. Mr. McGee, can you introduce the resolution, please?
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments as indicated hereafter. To the general purpose authority appointments, Ronald Donches, term to expire December 31, 2021. And Ann Baum, term to expire December 31, 2021, uh, 2020. Also to the jail advisory board, Marvin Boyer, term to expire December 31, 2019. So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these, uh, confirmations?
Are any of them here?
Is anyone here?
Ann is here.
Yeah, I, could I, I just wanted to ask Ann a question if I could. Aren't you kind enough to come? I know I mentioned it last night. If you want to come up to the podium, please. Oh, good evening. And actually, I mean, it has nothing to do with your resume, both you and Mr. Donches. Thank you for being willing to go on the authority. But I guess, you may be aware, we had this big project. You've probably been told about the bridges. And it started as a bundling and it turned into a real mess. The, the county executive referred to the GPA as a rogue authority. I like to use the term runaway, but I think you could use those terms interchangeable. In all my years, I, I, and I've served on Bethel Development Authority for two decades, I'd never, ever seen an authority that went that way. I mean, they were just, as the young youth would say, they were off the chain, as far, as far as I could tell. And, uh, I, I guess one of the concerns I have amongst many would be, just to ask you, going forward. I know at one point when they were saying they wanted to sue us and they hired a lawyer and everything else, we had asked for information and they sent it with a great, a great deal redacted. Now, I'm a big one for, they may not have realized this, but they're as much a public authority as anybody else. Now, I can see there are going to be certain confidential issues, whether it's the county or... But I would, I would just ask you, are you, how do you feel about redacting information if you serve on an authority? If councilors say to you, and I, and you, you are an independent authority, because once you're confirmed, you, you are, we can't tell you what to do, nor should we. But I mean, I guess I want your, I'd like to hear your opinion on that, sitting on, and I know you've sat on various things over the years. What's your opinion on that in terms of public information?
Certainly. So I'm, I'm a big believer in transparency. There are obviously pieces of information that you have to protect. Excuse me, I just got these invisalign, so my ability to speak is impaired. But, uh, so my thought would be, the only time you would redact or protect that confidentiality is if it were in some way to impact the confidentiality of someone involved in the project. I think it's important that the authority and council and the whole county work well together. It shouldn't be, we shouldn't be at odds with one another. That being said, I have zero experience on this particular authority, so I can't speak to what they may have redacted in the past with any authority whatsoever. I did sit on the airport authority and so I understand how authorities work. And I think there's a great opportunity for us to work together in a positive way.
Do you, do you think that an authority, like a general purpose authority, because they do loans, like the county recreated, much like Lehigh County's general purpose authority, and then there's some money that you, that is for use for the per, general purpose authority into the county. Uh, do you, do you think an authority, an independent authority should figure out how to monetize itself and sell its ideas across the state or country without necessarily discussing it with the county?
Gosh, that sounds like such a loaded question.
I don't mean it to be. I, I, I mean...
Good answer.
No, I, I didn't mean it to be loaded. I, I, I don't mean in the sense...
Right.
What am I trying to say, Mr. Kraft?
Is there a point to this? You're questioning her and think she's not even on the authority yet. We're questioning, we're here to approve her on her merits, to go on that authority and straighten things out. So if there's a question in there on her integrity or something and you're asking before you approve her...
Wait a minute.
I understand what you're, what you're asking, but you're asking questions that we've hashed out in council meetings that I don't think you even heard before.
That's why I'm talking to her now.
So, I mean...
Because she hadn't heard it. Neither.
Yeah, I understand.
It was a painful experience. I mean, to me, that was the worst experience. And I went through the 911 wars. This authority business was the worst. And I'm, I just want to get her opinion.
We've appointed a lot of people to this authority since everybody's changed. So if there's a que, you know those, okay, all right, if there's a question in there, please ask it.
I just did.
Okay. So, um...
And you said you felt that's a loaded question?
Well, I just don't, I, I don't...
Okay.
I don't know enough about this particular authority off the cuff. It doesn't sound like it would be something that would be on the agenda for an organization like that, but...
All right, first of all, please, I said your, your credentials are impeccable. Uh, I, I want to get to put a face with a name, and that was a big thing for me. You're on probably one of the most important authorities. I knew the other people that went on. I had already met them. I hadn't met you. I don't think I had met Mr. Donches. And that was the big thing. Uh, I, I didn't have a face with a name with the other people. And frankly, I, I thought they were out of control. And I think council in some ways let them get out of control. So I'll throw that back on council. So the thing is, uh, that's why I asked you for you to come. And, and I understand and I appreciate it. So thank you for showing up.
Thank you. Mr. Rinsky?
Yeah, I just want to say that I've had the privilege of meeting Ann. Uh, we had lunch. She was previously on the airport authority. And I just want to say that I think you're going to do a hell of a job on this GPA. Because I know that your reputation and your commitment to Northampton County and getting things factually right is very important to you because of the historical information you gave me. You know, and we had not even known each other. So I know that you're a person who will reach across the table and you want to help. So I just wanted, wanted to say that because I think it speaks to the integrity of the individual and the person that we're, um, going to hopefully vote for. And you definitely have my vote.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank you for volunteering for the board also. Is there any other questions for?
Not really a question. I, I would like to just follow up on Ms. Rinsky's comments. The airport authority was a disaster and everything that I've heard of since you and some of the new members came on have all been spoken highly of. Uh, so my hope is that we have another authority that maybe got involved in some things and got off course. And I think that, that your experience in healthcare and what they do for hospitals in the valley as far as providing tax-free and, and bond work will be right up your alley. I think you'll be terrific and I'll be supporting you. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other discussion on these appointments? Is Mr. Donches here?
Okay, that's okay. I just wanted to see him. That's all.
I did not begin to contact Ms. Baum or Mr. Donches until last night after you asked me. That's my fault. I apologize, sir.
No, and, and you don't have to apologize. I mean, I don't want to interrupt the love fest. It's, I, I just think it's important enough. In the past, we'd always have pointies come, even for the smaller committees. But again, I'm living in the past.
We'll do a better, no, we'll, we'll do a better job in the future.
Thank you.
Over the vote, please.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yeah.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Dees.
Yes.
No, you didn't. You were fine. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the courtesy of the floor. Uh, the first person I have sign up is Sandra Newman from Riverton Road in Lower Mount Bethel Township. Uh, Ms. Newman, are you here?
I believe she is.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Did you do all the appointments?
No.
It was all one thing?
Including the, and Mr., because Mr. Boyer, I believe, was here.
Is Mr. Boyer?
Mr. Boyer was here. I wanted to let you know he was here.
All right, well, we, thank you.
All right, thank you.
He, he's been appointed, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Newman? Congratulations. Thank you for volunteering.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, I am here to discuss the GPA. And, uh, I guess you left already. I was thinking perhaps Ms. Baum would be interested in some of my remarks this evening. A couple of things. I attended the 9/13 GPA meeting. And, uh, I wanted to mention something that you may or may not be aware of. Is that during that meeting, there was a unanimous vote, what was 3-0, to initiate removal of two more bridges from the GPA. Bridge 78 and Bridge 132. 78 is a bridge that, um, Tom Kohler has referred to as another one of those head-shaking bridges. One other point that came up is that, um, Mr. Dirtinger had mentioned that during the last meeting with, um, Krieger, uh, who is the construction firm, they expressed their opinion that they were not interested in repairing or replacing bridges that did not need it. So I think that that's an important thing to keep in mind as we proceed along the, the, the course of, uh, changing the, you know, the 33 bridges that are, were scheduled. What I'd like to do is ask the council if you have any information that you would be willing to share or updates you can provide, um, the supervisors in, in Lower Mount Bethel Township where there are five bridges scheduled to be repaired or replaced. If you have any updates for us. No updates? Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, next person on the list is... Uh, I have Lynn, and I'm sorry I can't read your last name, from Greystale. It's G E R something E S. Gerbis? Gerb, Gerbis? Gerber, okay. We have a portable mic there somewhere?
You could take the mic off, yeah.
We do have a wireless one too, you know.
First off, I'd like to thank you for giving the residents the Cracker Barrel for, uh, their game room. And, um, I have to look at my notes. One thing I have, um, the gardens at Greystale, they are so beautiful down there. And I keep telling it, all the residents, if they can, to come out. It's very peaceful, relaxing. But I've noticed when they mow, they mow too fast and it pushes the grass down. And as soon as they go by, it comes back up. Or they have to repair or replace the, uh, walkway because they're really, um, bubbled up or bumped up and it's hard to get around down there. And another thing, when they mow the grass, there's no one that picks up the sticks. And they mow over the branches that fall down. And they just mow over and leave them there. And then the next time they come around, they mow over them again. Because I've counted four places that the blades from the mowers have cut the branches. And I told someone about it and they went and they cut it in half or broke it in half and put it under a tree. But it stays there. And I know a resident that would go down there and pick up all the sticks and other debris. She'd sweep down there. She, she does everything. And I'm thinking, why aren't they doing this stuff? And they said, it's not their job. Well, whose job is it? And whose job is it to cut the dead branches off the trees before they fall and hit somebody in the head? That's my concern about that. And, uh, a friend of mine, a friend and I are going to do fundraising, uh, to get songbooks for the chapel because they need about 50 more. And they said they cost about $11 apiece. So we're thinking about selling candy and maybe selling soft pretzels, um, and other things. And I, I can go to corporations and stuff and, and try and get some money. Because I'm going to the Friends of Greystale meeting on Monday night and giving them my, my ideas about raising money. And, and there are some aides, um, that get in trouble and they get moved from one floor to another one. But this one, uh, something major happened and they fired him. And now he's working in the kitchen. And he still has access to all the people, uh, that he did harm against. And I don't think that's a good idea. There was another aide that walked off her, her floor and came back a couple of days later. But they aren't doing anything about her either. And I don't understand why, she can sit there and read a magazine for 40 minutes in the nurses station and, uh, nothing's said. She does the easy residence. She lets the hard residents go for everybody else. I, I don't understand why this is happening. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have on the list is Bud Struble from Greystale. Is Bud here?
My name is Bud Struble. I'm a resident council person, uh, from Greystale. And I'll have to agree with Lynn 100% with everything she said. The gardens was supposed to be beautiful gardens. That's what Greystale stands for, beautiful gardens. Have you been there lately? They're not beautiful anymore. Our Parks Department doesn't do anything down there. They don't trim any, they trim, like she told you, no limbs or anything. They just lay, then they mow over. Somebody's going to get hurt bad because there's nothing taken care of. There used to be a guy, uh, about four years ago when I went there, he used to come around with a little buggy and he had a generator on it. He trimmed the hedges. Those hedges haven't been trimmed in the last four years. There's vines growing up over the building and across the windows. Is that necessary? What happened to this Parks Department? Can't you do something about it to make this? I mean, uh, when I went there, the, the lawnmowers were not allowed to cross the bridges. They were not allowed to be on the, the paved paths. Now they cross the bridges. They do everything. The pavilions are falling apart. Nobody takes care of them. Are we homeless anymore or we just forgot about us? I mean, we, that's where we're here. Maybe you don't know what's going on. And we'd like to make it, bring it to your attention and see if you can do something for us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look into it. Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else that wishes to address County Council by courtesy of the floor? Seen a whole sea of hands. We'll move on to the next thing, County Executive Report. Mr. McClure, you have a report for us tonight?
I do.
You do?
Yep. The prison was inspected and we passed. There were some, uh, some minor deficiencies that, uh, we think will be able to be cleared up very quickly. But otherwise, we passed. It's, uh, as you may know, it's a pass fail. There, there is no grade, no grading system from the, the state in this regard, but we passed. So I thought you'd like to know that. Mr. Warner had a question last night in one of our committee meetings about Bank of America bank accounts. There are three that the county still has. The reason we have them is because they are magistrate's bank accounts, which we do not control. So otherwise, there are no Bank of America. You had, someone had KO, when I stepped out last night during the controller's report, there were questions about K O Zs and, and taxes. We have some answers. We hope Mr. Hartney is here. It's his daughter's birthday. So if you'd like to have your questions answered now, I'd appreciate asking them. So if Mr. Hartney could come up. I did prepare him for the, the questions he'd be getting. Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'll, I'll ask, because it came up last night. Uh, the question was, if you have a property that is in arrears on payment of taxes, can it remain in one of these tax advantaged programs? Because I know we have, uh, in parts of the administrative code, uh, there are, uh, implications for either individuals or entities that are in arrears on taxes. Uh, so I guess the question is, we have a certain property and a K O Z that is in arrears a significant amount of money. Do, do they remain in that? Or, or do they become disqualified? Or is there some penalty?
So in that specific example, talking about the Dixie Building?
That's correct.
So they are, the K O Z is a designation for the property. They do not receive the benefit until they make a capital improvement to the property. So they have not made a capital improvement. So they have this designation, but they're not receiving any benefit. So they're still required to pay their taxes. If they would meet the requirements of making the capital improvement, they have to apply for the benefit. Part of the application process requires them to be current on any of the taxes that they would have owed previously. So, and then every year, they go through a certification process. I would think, once you get in year one and you've paid your taxes, the K O Z, the way it's supposed to work on, in most cases, it wipes out all of your taxes. So it would be unlikely that they would become delinquent again. But that, that's how it works.
So, so they're, they're in the K O Z zone, but they're not really participating in the program until they start doing something.
It's a designation. Uh, I think the first time the state passed the K O Z legislation, I think it was like in the late 90s, they didn't have that, uh, that little caveat that you have to do something or create more jobs at the site or something. And so properties could take advantage of the tax break without doing anything. They got smart and don't allow that anymore.
Part of the question then is, so if I'm the company and I'm in arrears $900,000 in all my taxes, the longer I wait, the more taxes will be forgiven of me.
No. No, 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 no.
That's not how it works.
Once, you, you make the, but that's going forward. It's not backward. So you have to be current in order to be able to get into the program.
Mark?
May I? Matt, I just, I, John and I were talking about this the other day also. The fact that we agreed to allow them in the K O Z, because as, as a council, we had to decide on that, okay? And the districts and everybody's involved, okay? Should we decide to say, rescind, so to speak, or pull that back? What, what would be a process?
I can answer that. We have to withdraw the entire K O Z and they have to go and apply for that. The city would have to apply for that area to be designated again. The K O Z doesn't start until the project starts.
Until the project starts, but the fact is that we, we all agreed that they, we give them a chance. And I see that, I saw the numbers. John and I talked about it and as far as I'm concerned, I don't think they, they had plenty of years to do it.
But if you were to pull, if you say we have a K O Z designation on a blighted property somewhere and you decide in your infinite wisdom that you're going to pull the K O Z, now somebody that we don't even know about that's out there looking at this property who would take it over and pay all the taxes and start the project they want to, you know, or for quote, however they get it, now you've killed that whole idea of somebody who may be wanting to do it. I know nothing's happened there and, you know, like John, I feel nothing's ever going to happen there, but it's there just in case. I mean, the K O Z runs out in how many years now? It's only 10 years.
This one was approved in 2013. And it ends in 2023.
Right, so if nothing happens, it just disappears on its own and I'm sure they'll be in foreclosure before then.
He's still responsible for all the taxes on that property now.
But, you know, once you have a K O Z, you don't want to just kill it because somebody in that zone is not paying your taxes. You have to rescind the entire cause that you enacted.
I'm not against the process. I'm against what...
What's happening?
What is happening with the process. So, I mean, I, I was in agreement with seeing if we could do something to, if you will, punish the people that, you know, abused the citizens.
There's value in having that designation if, um, the current property owner, it, it's, it's about the property, not the property owner. And so if, that, this could be, make this property attractive to some other developer to come in and develop it. And so I'd be careful about that.
Yeah, because, and they would have to pay all the taxes and get everything up, stuff to transfer the deed anyway. So that would be in part of the sale, the proceeds of the sale.
Does that mean also that, that they can at the last minute pay a, a percentage of what they owe in taxes and maintain that, that property?
They would have to be current in all of their taxes in order to qualify for the benefit.
So do the taxes right now exceed the amount that the property is valued at?
I, I'm not sure. It was in the newspaper. That's what the numbers, I don't think it does.
Not anywhere near. So that's still a viable property if somebody wants to buy it at, like, a severe discount and pay all those back taxes?
There's a lot of work there.
It's challenging.
There's a lot of environmental...
In other words, that property's going to sit there for a while.
We're, we're working with them, um, through the Lehigh Valley Land Recycling Initiative to get the environmental issues characterized.
Is that's what's holding it up?
So it's part of it. Um, like, you know, you need to understand what the environmental concerns are so that you can start putting numbers and figures around that to, and that goes in your redevelopment pro forma. So, you know, those types of things, we are actively trying to assist that property in. But as far as like providing incentives that, um, he would profit from, no.
Any other questions about what a K O Z is and how it works? Okay, thank you. Can we get back to the executive report?
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing us to be responsive to the questions that arose last night. Courtroom one is shuttered for the time being. There is, uh, mold in, in courtroom one. The, the room has been tested and it, the levels in the room are not levels that you would expect anyone to get sick. So that's good news. Uh, but with that being said, we need to remediate that, we need to remediate that mold. We are doing that. We, I don't, I haven't been given a timetable, but we're, we're working on it as quickly as we can because we know the court needs to have that room back in service. Something you need to know, um, because I know you're all interested in the health and safety of everybody who works here, that, that has its own air handler, which means it's not sharing ventilation with the rest of the building. So that's good news and gives us confidence. One of the reasons the mold developed is for environmental preferences of certain folks who work in there a lot. The room is often at 50, five zero degrees, which, because of its inner, the, so as Mr. Durtenger so readily explained it to me, that room is not well insulated because of its age. The interaction of the outside air and the 50 degrees causes condensation, which lays in the duct and near the vents and the mold develops. So we're developing a plan to have a, once we get expert advice on what the proper temperature is to have it in that room, that will be the temperature so that we shouldn't have a mold problem going forward in the future. That's your mold update. Bank of America. Mr. Cusick is probably the only one that hasn't heard by now. Mr. Heller is retiring. He is, as I once was, he was once a member of this august body. And then he spent many, many years doing a terrific job as our park superintendent. I can't thank Mr. Heller enough. And I'm going to keep thanking him up until his retirement party, which you're all going to be invited to, for all of his great years of service. And so we appreciate him very much. And Brian Cope is going to be our new park superintendent. So you're the last to know, Mr. Cusick, I'm sorry. With that, since we're on park superintendents, a great man, a great man who was once our park superintendent has passed. And that's Bill Minio.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't talk about politics up here, but, you know, my campaign last year and since being elected county's, like, I've talked a lot about Northampton County's future being green. Well, that's nice. It's good rhetoric. And I am going to put our money where our mouth is. But the fact of the matter is, if our future's green, it's because Bill Minio lived here. And Bill Minio did a great deal of work teaching us all about the importance of farmland preservation, environmentally sensitive land preservation and open space. And he will be, he will be well missed and we mourn his passing. Mr. Heckman, your questions for Ms. Baum about some of the, some of the things that I think you and I agree about went awry at the General Purpose Authority. The reason she wasn't prepared to answer your questions is because I didn't have that conversation with her because I don't intend for the county government to put them in that position as long as I'm in this position. So I didn't think it was, I don't think it was important for her to even consider that. But I wanted to explain to you why she wasn't prepared to answer those.
Fine. I mean, she was fine. I'm realizing I'm from a different generation where we actually would meet people and ask them questions. We don't do that anymore.
Oh, no. We'll do it whenever you want to. That, I believe, sir, concludes my report.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. McClure?
One quick one. I noticed on the elevator on the way up, there was a little slip of paper for the second floor that said voter registration.
Yes.
What was it? First floor, lower lights changed. What is going on there? And could you update us as to?
And thank you for asking me that question. I apologize that it's not on the report. Voter registration has moved into the courthouse complex. The reason we did that, and I think we've talked about this before, is the Melitus Building is untenable to be preserved by the county as a standing structure. So the plan, the county's plan is to raise the Melitus Building and put parking spaces in there. We're going to, we're well on our way to getting that done. And the first step of doing that was getting voter registration out of Melitus and established here in the courthouse. And we had some room. I'm sorry? There on what? One?
On the first floor, right next to courtroom one.
Yeah.
So the old public defender space, the old county council space.
And what was there before that, right before?
Public defender.
No, D C E D was there.
Okay.
They moved over to the new building.
Right.
Will that be the new home?
What?
Will that be the new home?
They're staying here, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Down and to the right.
Oh, can I ask a question about Greystale? And I know the weather's been horrific this summer. I mean, my yard looks like a nature preserve. But about the gardens, Greystale Gardens, we heard some comments. Are, you know, somebody, would somebody please go out and check it?
Yes, absolutely. That's why Mr. Emili's here tonight to.
Thank you.
We knew specifically that we may hear some suggestions about what we could do better. No, that's why he's here. He took notes and he'll check on that.
Yeah, we appreciate the people from Greystale who came to let us know what's going on. It's always welcome.
I'm glad they're here.
We thank you. Any other questions for the county executive? Seeing none, thank you, Mr.?
One more thing.
Always one more.
Mr. Ken Brown is on your agenda tonight to be considered by you to be the last appointment in my cabinet. And I can't tell you enough how much I respect the work he has done at Shiloh through the years and the administrative experience that he has garnered through his years there. And when you combine that with his political experience, serving on the Eastern City Councils from 2003, and some of his life experience, such as being a referee for high school basketball and other leagues, he'll be a nice buffer between me and another branch of independent government that I interact with often. So we're really looking forward to your confirmation of him tonight. And we have, we've taken a hard look at the necessity to fill this job. And Mr. Durtenger, amongst the many hats he was wearing, was also wearing the Director of Court Services hat. And it had become, I think, overwhelming.
For him or the courts?
I'll let them speak for themselves, but he has an acquired taste.
So I've heard.
That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next thing's old business. We have a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 499-2009, An Ordinance Entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Establishment of the Northampton County Gaming Revenue and Economic Redevelopment Authority pursuant to the Economic Development Financing Law, for the purpose of exercising any and all purposes and powers permitted by that law and the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, fixing the authority's term of existence and authorizing appropriate county officials to take such actions as is required to effectuate the creation thereof. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Dietz and Ms. Vargo Hefner at the September 6th meeting. And the public hearing is tonight. Possible vote will be held at this meeting. Is anyone from the public here to speak about the gaming authority? Seeing nobody? Anybody from county council have any more questions or concerns about this? All right, seeing none, could you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Is there any other old business to discuss tonight in front of county council? Seeing none? Next thing on the agenda is new business. I have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of Northampton County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Providing for the Adoption of Certain Procedures Related to the Solicitation and Award of Public Contracts Within Northampton County, Providing for Certification Requirements for Public Contractors, Providing for Certification Requirements for Subcontractors to Public Contracts, Providing for Public Contract Review Processes, Repealing inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances containing a saving clause and providing for an effective date. The adoption of this ordinance will concurrently adopt a resolution that addresses the challenges set forth in the ordinance and its terms will be incorporated in their entirety as material terms of this ordinance. I need someone to sponsor this. Mr. Dietz and a co-sponsor, Mrs. Rinsky. This will be, a public hearing and debate and possible vote will be held at the October 4th, 2018 meeting. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is consideration of appointment of Director of Court Services. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Absolutely. Resolved by the Northampton County Council, Kenneth Brown shall be confirmed in his appointment as a Director of Court Services with the pay grade Group Four, Step Three C, salary of $77,566, effective September 20th, 2018. So moved last night.
All right, Mr. Brown is here and Mr. Heckman loves to talk to people that are up for appointments. So do you have questions for him? You want to have him come up here or was he here last night?
Yeah, he was here last night. We had chat after the meeting and.
Do you have any follow-ups you would like to follow up with him or?
I'm golden.
Seeing that Mr. Heckman's fine, does anybody else wish to?
Just one thing.
Mr. Warner?
Knowing, I'm going to support Mr. Brown, but I just want you to know that public perception's a powerful restraint sometimes. And I know that Mr. Brown's going to maintain his existence, place I believe he is, on city council. And I know he's going to be a part of our administration. So in lieu of that fact, and to safeguard the integrity of our council and also his integrity, I've asked for an opinion. And I believe Mr. McClure and Mr. Spudoni have the opinion on whether or not there'd be a perceived conflict of interest between those two situations.
Short answers, there is.
Short answers.
That's a short answer.
Yes, it's fine. No, it's, yeah.
We have researched it. We've researched both the Homeroal Charter. We have researched the Eastern Homeroal Charter. And there is no conflict either way.
Any, no. Follow-up? I wanted that out in the open because there's, obviously, that could be a point of discussion.
It was taken seriously. We did some.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion regarding Mr. Brown's appointment to this office? Nobody? Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Brown.
Congratulations.
Yes, please. Please.
You don't have to be nice to people.
Oh, I won't. No, so I'm serious and I thank you very much for your confidence. I'll look forward to beginning my new career here and working directly with our executive and the rest of the cabinet that he has in place. I will say that our executive is, he's right. I'm a referee. Let's face it. But I do know what inadvertent whistle mean too. So when we have to call a timeout, we got to call a timeout. Again, I am extremely humbled by the position and I look forward to diving in there and getting some things done. Thank you for your confidence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, next thing on the agenda, consideration of a personnel request resolution, Department of Human Services. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of pension and retirement benefits administrator, pay grade C S 221A, salary of $44,827, shall be upgraded to one full-time position of pension, retirement and tech administrator, pay grade of C S 23-2B, salary $49,050 in the Department of Human Resources, effective September 20th, 2018. This was discussed last night.
Discuss and move. Okay, are there any other questions regarding this personnel, this resolution? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro? Peg?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Next thing on the agenda is consideration of exoneration of past due county real estate taxes to lower Salk and Township, to lower Salk and Township Resolution. Mr. Heckman, could you introduce the resolution?
You've got it. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council as follows. One, all whereas clauses are hereby incorporated into this resolution. And, number two, Lower Salk and Township is hereby exonerated from payment of any and all back taxes owed on the property as more fully set forth in Exhibit One. The Tax Claim Bureau is hereby directed to take necessary steps to exonerate and terminate the past due taxes owed on tax map parcel N 8-14-80719 and 3, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
And you so moved, I guess.
Oh, we did.
Is there any discussion on alleviating Salk and Township of their tax burden on this tiny parcel of land?
It was a past practice of this council and the council before us. So I think we all were in agreement yesterday. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding this issue? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, moving right along here. We have the consideration of an amendment to the listing of county depositories Resolution. Mr. Heckman?
All right. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council, that following shall constitute the current and updated listing of county authorized depositories, section mark bold underlined. I've been adding sections mark, that's not important. Effective this 20th day of September 28th. Effectively, all we did was add a new bank to the depositories.
What bank was that?
That would be the Fifth Third Bank.
The Fifth Third Bank? Which is in sixth place.
That's what it is.
It's the Fifth Third Bank?
Where is that?
On Second Street.
All right.
What, are you questioning me?
And you so moved?
I did move.
Unanimously?
Only after we discussed American Bank.
Okay, yeah, I know we don't like that bank. All right, is there any other discussion, questions, inquiries on to why we have the Fifth Firth Bank, whatever it's called? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, now we have the consideration of Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Resolutions. There's A, Mission of Love Food Bank Portland Upper Mount Bethel Food Pantry, are we doing these separately?
Yes.
So, Mr. McGee, can you read the Mission of Love Food Bank Portland Upper Mount Bethel Food Pantry, please?
Whereas Northampton County Council does hereby support the request for the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant of $75,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the purchase of equipment that will support the expansion of the Mission of Love Food Bank and the Portland Upper Mount Bethel Food Pantry in the Slate Belt area, in the Slate Belt.
You so moved.
So moved.
Is there any discussion regarding this? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro. Heck?
Put the martini.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda, same thing, is the Slate Belt Multi-Municipal Comprehensive Plan. Mr. McGee, can you read the, introduce the resolution?
Yes.
Now therefore...
Now therefore be it resolved that the applicant does hereby designate the Director of the Department of Community and Economic Development, Tina Smith, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the County of Northampton and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. So moved.
Any questions on this, great? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
And Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is consideration of a request for 2018 Monroe County Local Share Account Grant for Mincy Lake Resolution. Mrs. Rinsky, could you please introduce the resolution?
Now therefore, it is hereby resolved, Northampton County is eligible, willing, and able to request a 2018 Monroe County Local Share Account Grant for the Mincy Lake Recreational Rehabilitation Improvements for the amount of $150,000 for the betterment of recreation, tourism, habitat improvement, and water quality.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the Mincy Lake Resolution?
I think we discussed it in the open space committee meeting.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, next thing we have is a consideration of administrative code, Article 13 Contract Resolution A, Reynolds Business Systems. Mr. Heckman, could you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, excuse me. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Reynolds Business Systems for scanning services. So moved. Now it is, the information is there, I didn't read all the whereas's, but, and also you have the contract sheet on the other side, basically giving you the procurement notice what we're talking about.
This was discussed at the Finance Committee and unanimously put forth to council?
I believe so.
Sure, committee.
Yeah, sure, it was.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the Reynolds Business Systems contract? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Next thing on the agenda is consideration of administrative code, Article 13 Contract Casey Mechanical Services Incorporated. Mr. Heckman, introduce the resolution.
Yes, now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract amendment with Casey Mechanical Service, Inc., for additional work to install new water lines as part of the steam line replacement project, so moved. There was a great deal of discussion and why it makes sense to do it now, and you can see that's also attached there with your procurement notice or the amounts. And we did vote to move ahead.
Are there any other discussions under recommendation with Finance Committee? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hepner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Okay, next thing...
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next thing's consideration administrative code, Article 13 Vision Technologies Incorporated. Mr. Heckman, could you introduce the resolution, please?
Sure. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Vision Technologies, Inc., for managed IT services countywide, so moved. The attachment tells you, this is a biggie, the terms, and the two of the gentlemen principals from Vision are here tonight. We did discuss it, and there were a fair amount of questions. I believe we did propose them bringing here and recommend it. I don't know if there's any further questions, there was a lot of discussion yesterday.
Okay, are there any further questions, Ms. Rinsky?
I have a question. I was looking at the best...
Is your mic on?
It is on, yeah. I was looking at the best and final offer, and it says here under the notes, two mileage will be billed as incurred, overtime hours will be billed as incurred, does that mean that those are payments that would be made over and above the $33-plus million? And if so, what would those payments look like? I mean, I think that would kind of balloon this whole thing.
Well, as it all goes, the mileage is just because we have so many places that are either district judge's homes, district judge's offices that have to be, we have people traveling back and forth from, so that is what we're talking about is mileages, we're not talking about sending people to...
Las Vegas.
Las Vegas.
No, no, no one thinks that it's someone's going to drive across country.
Well, to that extent, it doesn't really allow for a lot of ballooning. There isn't a lot of overtime...
What's the rate?
It's the...
Standard?
Yeah, federal rate, yes. The other part of that is overtime would be for emergency circumstances, not for projects that are foreseen, those are things that would be dealt with by scheduling their time.
It also says customer required travel, and so that would, if you would require somebody to be in a hotel overnight or something?
Yes, if, if...
And all software, hardware support agreements will be billed as incurred, what does that entail?
We pay for our licenses for our...
Like a Microsoft license or something like that?
Yes, exactly, precisely. And there are several others, but yes, that's exactly one of them.
So what's the estimated cost that that would be over the $33 million? Is there an estimated cost?
We, it's actually already in our budget, it's something that we pay for regularly already.
Oh, okay.
That's part of our refresh, that there are many things that we have in that, but one of the advantages of having this company onboard with us is they are partners with a lot of the companies that we do provide, or we purchase as equipment for, and they are limited to 4% of markup on anything they do with us there. So we would be using their buying power to buy our stuff more cheaply, and they would only be able to charge us 4% on top of that for their efforts in procuring those things for us.
Okay, so this did say the best and final offer for Vision Technologies, but were there any other bids?
There were three others, there were two others.
Was this the best bid or was it the cheapest bid?
Actually, in this particular case, yes to both.
Okay.
And in significant terms. They have one of the strongest back benches of everyone we spoke to, they understood all of the issues we had, and the, I believe you all received the RFP.
Yes.
It was exhausted in what we had asked for, so...
It was, I did read through some of these things, and it, it's very comprehensive in like Gracel, the voting machines, human services, everything, so they're going to be able to take care, and that was one of the reasons why I was sort of concerned with...
Well, we had discussed at great length last night, they have clients like the EPA, like the, effectively the Las Vegas School District, which has as many students as we have citizens in Northampton County. They have, they have the Western Power Grid, they have a great number of very impressive clients that reflect the needs that we have but go beyond the needs that we have, so this is a very good fit for them. They've been meeting in the last two days with our staff, and on both sides, their understanding of our staff, and the conversations I've had with our staff so far, everyone is delighted and look forward to this, this fit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, since Mr. Warner?
I want to add, I had questions yesterday, but I, here's what I want to add to this, okay? First of all, it is a significant contract, it's $33 million. In their programs, they talk about reducing change orders, which is, they reduce the change orders, which means anytime we have a question, something comes up, they're going to address that. Secondly, we always have the 30 and out clause in place.
I did notice that.
And so that's, that's a safeguard. I did research, found out that a couple of things, which I was glad, I thought I'd pass them on to council, okay? Incorporated 5000 said they were one of the fastest growing companies for the last eight years. They started in 2000, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
All right. Secondly, they're the top, they're one of the top 50 systems integrated programmers for 2017, so, okay, I was the skeptic a little bit.
Yeah, I took attention to that, though.
Not because we've gotten into other situations with their contract, but I did do some homework and found out that so far, we can get into this thing in 30 days into it or 50 days, and I do believe we should have some accountability and updates as they get into it, because the question was, did they do the audits? Have they assessed our programs? And they have not yet done that.
They have not yet, they have not yet received the contract, so they can't...
They're okay to do it, yeah.
Yeah, they can then allow it to go.
But they are going to, I believe they're going to do it.
To that extent, they have already, these gentlemen, Tom and Pete who you met last night, have already been to all of our sites, they have gone through with our, our lead people who are with the county, and for those who are not familiar, this also means that all of the people who are presently working for the county will now be working for them. So they were with Conduit, and on January 1st, they'll, they'll be with Vision. So we, we will have no transition issue there. They were the only company that was going to take a fresh audit of what we have here and address the possibilities of need for fixes or what needs to be addressed moving forward. And there are two new software systems that are being rolled out because of the AOPC, so they will have their hands full, but they have the depth of, of support from their company at large to help us out here.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We, part of that discussion we had was very involved, this is, our information service is our tech, it's a big deal, they impressed, were impressive in the sense that they did, or at least pledged to be very present, and, and also knowing who's in charge, accountable, I guess, would be the best word, and that may have been some issues I understand people have been having for a while. So, yeah, I mean, they made a good presentation, we'll see how it plays out.
So just one more question, just to understand the payments, after the first three years, the base term of the pay is like $7 million some odd dollars, right? So are we obligated to renew the contract?
We are not.
The next five years?
We have the option.
So we have that out at three years?
We have that option at 30 days.
At 30 days, but...
We also have...
What are we really going to know about them in 30 days? Do you know what I mean?
You surprised would you find out?
But, yeah, that's a stand, that's a standard for our county contract, so we can always have a 30 and out, but at three years...
We have an out.
We can then just decide.
And then the next five years, we have another out, and then the next five years, we have another out.
Well, you know...
I just wanted to understand.
It would be a new group.
This is the way all the contracts work in the county, I mean, this one may be surprising you because it's so large, but IT, you know, what we got from Xerox and I hope what we're getting from the East, I'm supporting this 100% because I'd like, you know, having worked in the IT departments years ago, I can't wait to see everything get integrated and work properly, because it doesn't.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
You just heard the prison talk about things that don't integrate, things that don't talk, with the depth of field they have, maybe they can help us with all these things, so I'm supporting this 100%, and I mean, if there are any more questions that we didn't beat up last night...
No, we didn't beat it up. I'll restate what I said, for $33 million, they've showed up both nights and they're here.
Right.
And they're talking to us, and that's...
And we've had people that didn't show up at all, contracts that big, never came here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I mean, this is, you know, I mean...
Not only are they invested, but they're also, they were the only company that was singularly owned, and their owner is making an investment with us as well, so it's not, it's not one-sided here.
Right, I, you know, like I said, I, you know, and is there any other, Mr. Kuzik?
No, not a question, just a comment, I want to thank Mr. Dirtinger and all the people on the committee, that was a huge RFP. It's a $33.7 million contract, potentially over 13 years, and it touches everything we do in this county. I'm going to support it, and I'm cautiously optimistic, and I'll tell the two gentlemen in the back, you better make this worth every penny of $33.7 million. Thank you.
And can we, any other questions or can I call for the vote?
I have a question.